Entertain a motion to adjourn this committee.
I'll make a motion to adjourn this committee.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of adjourned, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Okay, that's it. That committee was adjourned.
Hold on before 6:30.
Alrighty.
Let's hope that's a trend.
Okay.
I thought there was a copper sitting over there.
Yeah, it's 6:30.
Yeah, 6:30.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting here of May 28th, 2019, of the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Cambridge to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Christensen.
Here.
Cunningham. Whitwer.
Here.
Bryanig.
Here.
Hollenbeck.
Here.
Kumbier.
Here.
McNally.
Here.
Okay. Meeting is now officially underway. And we say a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Moving on. Ladies, has this meeting been properly posted?
It was posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundson Community Center, the Village website, Cambridge news office, and the home town bay.
Okay, alright. Public appearances, anybody wanna just, we have two observers. Okay. Alrighty, moving on. Approval of the consent agenda, which included the Village Board minutes of May 14th, as well as the water and sewer meeting of May 21st.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Alright.
I'll second.
Alright. Any discussion necessary?
Two corrections. The Village Board minutes, the meeting was called to order at 6:33, 0. So, wasn't I sure if it was 6:33 or an extra 3 in there? And then, if you go down to section...
Yep.
We missed who made a motion. There's a blank, it says trustee blank.
Oh, okay, which number was it?
Yeah, I'm trying to find where it was. Oh, I, I, 9I.
Oh, okay.
So trustee blank made a motion.
Okay. You will, I've got the minutes upstairs, we'll take a look and see.
Either that, or you can watch it on YouTube.
Yep.
Does anybody remember making that?
I don't remember if it was me or not. It might have been me, I'm thinking, but I don't know, I don't remember.
Alright.
You know, two weeks was a long time ago.
Is that right?
Alright.
I will make those corrections. Item I, 9I.
Okay, any other comments about either of the two items on the consent agenda? Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed to approval? Alright, that passes. Moving on, reports. I will give you a kind of a quick review here on three or four of them. Number one, bike trail. We had a, the bike trail is the connector trail. The connector trail takes the Glacial Drumlin, and it connects it to the Cam Rock. And, as you know, the Cam Rock, the trailhead starts over here by the dam, and continues on to Rockdale. And what we're trying to do is to connect this over to the Glacial Drumlin. We have a committee, a committee hasn't met since November. And since that time, we do have a $210,000 matching grant from the state of Wisconsin. From Dane County. And what we have to do now, the committee has to go ahead and has to find individuals or entities that would be willing to assist with this match. And I've made it clear, and individuals that are on that committee certainly know that there is not going to be a willingness of this group to go ahead and just simply write out a check for any amount. Now, there has been with the previous application that went through with the county, there was talk in there about $50,000. And I don't know where that number came from, but that's what's on there. And we have four years if we're going to do anything with that. At this time, the feeling is that we need to augment the group with some additional, I wouldn't say stakeholders, but some additional individuals. One being the hospital out of Fort Atkinson. They might have some interest in serving on the committee because it does promote a healthier lifestyle. We are also looking at possibly adding on somebody from the bank to the committee. I serve on the committee, it's an ad hoc committee along with Steve Struss. And I'm sure you all know him, my predecessor. And the other individual that's got a major voice in this, and that's Bob Saleoff, and he is chairing the committee. Where we left off with this last meeting on Thursday, and again, it was the first time we've actually talked since, I think, November, is that we're gonna move the meeting time from Thursdays at 9:30, we're gonna try to do this in the evening at 5:30. Now, we may lose a couple of the folks from Jefferson County, and, because they can do this during the day, they don't wanna go to one more meeting at night. But if we can do these meetings in the evening, we feel that we might be able to, you know, get some additional voices on there, and to help us with the work that has to be done. So, I have made it very clear that we are not just gonna go ahead and take this responsibility on, and, you know, I will work with them, and I'll try to give you, I will give you updates on what we have. Paula?
So, when you and Steve were on that committee, it was clear that neither one of you were representing the Village Board, that you guys were on that committee as an individual. So I have concerns about you speaking for the Village Board.
I don't think he was speaking at the time.
You just said that he was speaking on behalf of the village.
Okay. It's gonna be very difficult to say when you're speaking and not, so I have to be extremely careful. I will say that I have asked that, Steve serves as a secretary, and that any of our minutes, anything that we have as far as a discussion agenda, does not say the Cambridge Connector Trail. It just says the connector trail. Because I don't want this thing to be seen as a tool of the Village of Cambridge. I can continue to serve on this committee. I am not interested in serving as a de facto leader, the president, and I am doing everything that I can, but Cambridge is a big part of this, because this is where it would start and continue on up to State Farm Road.
Right, but I have, I have concerns about you speaking on what the board thinks and believes without the board telling you what the board thinks and believes.
Okay.
Do you know what I mean?
Kinda like I had the same concerns about Steve speaking for the board with the $50,000 thrown out there.
Yeah.
So you're concerned about a conflict of interest?
I'm not concerned about a conflict of interest. This board never elected anyone, or never appointed anyone, never agreed to have anyone represent the Village Board on that committee. Steve and Mark were just individuals who were interested in the connector trail, as was Bob Saleoff. And so they got together and they, so I just have concerns about them speaking on behalf of the village.
But what I'm saying is, where were your concerns when Steve was speaking on behalf of the village?
Steve never gave a report like what Mark just gave. And we all had concerns about the $50,000 that were in that one proposal. We all had concerns with that, Chris.
Okay.
We all had concerns there. All of us did, I did as well. So...
I'm just wondering how it would change, though. How did we...
No, I said this when Steve and Mark, or when Steve and Mark were on it, when Steve was president, I said the same thing.
Alright.
That's true.
Well, maybe my mistake is bringing up the bike trail, the connector trail, here at this meeting. And I don't have to, I don't have to give you updates. I can just go to it, and I make it clear, I do not represent the official Board of Trustees. And, you know, you'll just have to rely upon me then to go and tell you what is happening. But this is a, this could be a very big development. I think the better way is to have it recognize that there's a voice, but that voice can only go so far in those meetings, to make sure that you're not obligating the village. I would not have obligated the village with $50,000, and I certainly won't do it with 210. So do you wanna know?
Do those committee meetings get vetted through you, and then you report to the board?
Uh-uh.
Or no?
They are not official village.
It's just an ad hoc committee. I mean, if someone wants Mark to represent this board on that, that's fine. I'm not comfortable doing that, because I think if the, if there are decisions that need to be made that the village is making and representing on that board, then it should come before a meeting, so that all citizens understand what we're saying our commitment is going to be, or not be. That's all. If nobody else has concerns, then that's fine.
Anybody else have concerns? Alright. So then I will just be circumspect, circumspect over the line of authority that I have. I will give you updates, which is something that I guess, I forgot that Steve hadn't done it, but I'm trying to keep you apprised. If something is going to happen with that connector trail, it would be a big development. Alright.
It's a big deal for Cambridge also.
Yeah. Moving on, the parade. We had the parade yesterday, and we didn't have as many people with the parade, I think, as we did a year ago, but that might have been the weather. We had still a very good turnout, and no complications. And thank you for, you know, for everybody who did make it down there, either as an attendee, or as a participant. There's one thing, though, that came up, and I've already started looking into this. And I noticed, when I was in the parade, I was looking to the left, and there was a drone. The drone was over the ground. And, you know, the first thought in mind, and it wasn't that high up, I wanna say maybe 20 feet off the ground, it was about 10 feet over the, over the heads of the attendees. That's dangerous, because if you lose control of a drone, there are so many people, it's gonna come down, you got four whirling blades, you could have an injury. So I did call Lisa, and I did call our police department, I asked them about this. And drones are licensed out, there's hobbyists, there's commercial, and then there's military. And certainly, we're not military, and where we would fall in is on hobbyists. There are rules that you can enforce, you can enact those with your ordinances, and I think we need to do that.
I think so.
This is just too dangerous, to have somebody operating a drone, and you're flying over people, and, you know, I think it's, they just wanna see it, but, you know, that's, not doing anything, I think, is a, is an invitation for having a problem. If a drone goes down into the audience, you will have some people hurt.
It's the drone, the drone flyers' responsibility, then? That's the responsibility they accept when they fly the drone in public space.
But you can have ordinances regarding, and that information will be forthcoming, as far as what you're expecting from the hobbyist group. Now, if you're military, that's a different story. If you're commercial, they are already governed. But this, this is likely to be a hobbyist that was doing this, I mean, I don't know.
Who's to say it isn't a young kid doing it? And the parents don't know about it, but they're still liable, then?
I think another lens in this, sorry, is, I believe the gentleman that was using the drone was using it to market Cambridge, to market the parade, to market how the streets were lined up, and how well the parade was going, because I've already seen some of that footage on Facebook. I don't think he meant anything nefarious by it. I think he meant it to, to give people out there, in a marketing sense, how vibrant our community is, but I don't necessarily wanna ordinance these folks out of marketing, if it's free marketing.
Yeah.
You know?
But you should have been made aware that the drone was gonna be out there.
Well, no, I mean, how can you, you guys know?
Huh?
We, we have no authority over people flying their drones right now. Like Mark said, there are different categories, the military, the commercial, are all licensed through the FAA. They've gone through classes, they know the requirements. The police were looking into state statutes and county ordinances to see if anything does relate that. So they're doing some background, but...
I know that as far as a hobbyist, they're not allowed to fly over people. And they also have to be, I think it was 75 feet away from people. This was not 75 feet away. So I don't think that, you know, was commercial. I could be wrong, and, and I don't want us to go crazy on this. We just have some ordinances, and this is what we require of operators. And I had heard about the paper wanting to take some shots of the parade, Chris, that they were gonna do it with the way back, I don't know, wherever they would be at, probably in front of David's building, but then get a shot of Main Street coming down the hill. This was not that far away. This was, it wasn't any further away than, than that door, and about the ceiling height. So that was way too close to the buildings, and to folks, and I think we need to look at that.
I would be concerned too, Chris, about having something too restrictive, so when an ordinance is presented to us, if we have some objections, or want to take, make sure that we're still allowing enough, you know, flexibility for that hobbyist to enjoy their hobby, I think that's probably what we need to do.
Yeah, I agree. And, but also taking a look at the lens of safety and other people, and a large gathering too, has to be taken into consideration, so.
One other thing about the parade, so for next year, is it at all possible to place a sign or something out by Highway 12 that says, "Parade underway, expect 15-minute delay on Highway 12"? Because Dean and I happened to be gardening during the parade, because we wanted to get it in before it rained, our garden in before it rained, and saw a car go by, saw a car go back, saw a car go by, saw the same car go back. So everybody turns around and goes on 18, and some of them were not too happy, because they were speeding a little bit, as they were roaring past our house the other direction. So I'm thinking, maybe we could put a sign up that might be nicer for people, they might not get as angry.
That's not a bad idea. I had talked to law enforcement after the parade, it was raining, and I went down there and I asked him, and he mentioned that there were some heavy trucks, and there were about six that were coming by in the parade. And I don't know where exactly they went off, but there, we could have somebody down there.
Yeah, 'cause anybody could just go and, you know, take 18 up to, you know, and across on High Street or something.
And I guess one discussion for next year, too. This has evolved over the years, different people running it. The last couple of years, it has fallen not, it hasn't been a village event, but village, village people, doing the different aspects of it. Is this something that the village wants to say is a village-sponsored event, is something to consider down the line?
Yeah, I know how we got roped into this, because nobody else showed up. So Steve took the formal part of it, and I took the parade.
And I paid for the wreath.
You paid for the wreath.
Again this year.
They didn't get around to that, I don't think. Oh, no, the wreath was there, wreath was there.
Yeah, wreath was there.
Just that the, the rainstorm hit us, and the van had to leave, and instruments were gonna get wet, so. But we can, we can do that, you know, let's make it a note to bring this up for review in May about the parade for, how about April?
It's gotta be April, yeah.
Moving on, I met with Jody Young with MSA, and got a little bit of an update, and I guess with the village, Lisa was in the meeting. We were talking specifically about the Melster site. Lisa, any, anything that came out of that meeting that...
We're working with Jody Young, we did have conference call with Paul Kent from Stafford Rosebaum, who has agreed to help us in this. They had done a little work on this previously, the firm. So, we had some discussion with him, we got him some information he needed. So we're just waiting to hear a couple of things from him before we move on. MSA is flatting where the DNR wants test sites dug and stuff, and as soon as we're ready, he will get that to the DNR for their approval before we move forward with that.
Okay. Alright. Thank you. And two more items. One was Blue Jay Way. And I've, I've had a conversation with Gene Kapsner, who is the Chair of the Town of Oakland. And as you can expect, you know, Gene is, he's still maintaining the position that this road thing has kinda been transferred over. And I'm saying that, no, it was never transferred over. We do ultimately get the road aid, but that gets sent first to the Town of Oakland, and then it gets sent to us. Then he is saying, well, you know, there's $1,800 in road aid, and that that should have been, that was for the whole thing, and that's not just maintenance, that's replacement. And I'm like, no, there's no way that we would have gone ahead on this.
And that $1,800 is for all three roads, not just that one road.
So we've got more work to do on this. About the only thing that we're agreeing to is that nothing is gonna happen this year. We are not gonna get this resolved. But I do think we should strive to have a meeting with the Town of Oakland, and after you and your counterpart, perhaps get some more information, maybe directly from the state.
Yeah, and we have gotten some.
Okay. So if we can get something on the calendar for late July, early August?
I think, when I spoke to Gene, he was thinking August weekend.
Alright. So we have that. And then, construction progress. I just have it down here. Lisa, anything on Amundson Center, and updates there quickly?
It's moving along well. They're finishing up some stuff, they've started putting in cabinets and countertops and so forth, they have some finishing work to do. Finishing up on the lighting, HVAC is working. They're almost complete to finish putting in the ceiling tiles. They will, hopefully by the end of this week, start putting flooring in. We have been in contact with Kelly Blanchard, who's done some work, most recently up at the youth center. She is looking for stuff for us, for furniture. She did receive all the plans from River Architects, so she can have the exact dimensions and see placements and so forth. So she's working on the furniture.
Okay. I would ask any of the trustees who are so interested, especially colleagues to my left here, because you have the construction background, both of you.
We stopped by, we stopped by.
Stop by and see if there's anything on a punch list. There was one item that I noticed that, you know, cracking a door or something.
That's already taken, and...
Alright. Okay. But if we can do that, just informally, if you see anything that, you know, doesn't pass muster, this is the time to kinda report on that.
Yep.
Okay, so that is my...
I have a question, based on that vault-wise, is there gonna be a vault back there, then?
What it is, it's a small closet, it's not fire safe or anything. We are looking, it is a lock. We've looked some for safes and so forth. We do also upstairs currently have a large three drawer cabinet that is cement lined, fire safe, that we thought to of putting that in there, that we would just need the guys to put a new lock on it. So we would have a fire safe cabinet within that, but it is a separate locked room. That wouldn't be part of the regular storage room.
Okay. Alright. Any questions? Okay, that's my report. Library Board, how are they doing?
We met on May 15th. We talked about the strategic planning, and what we're doing there. The next phase of the strategic planning is to get citizen input, and so there's different, three sessions, I think we've decided we're gonna do three sessions, and we're targeting different groups of people for each one of those different sessions. And we're looking at probably a July, maybe a July timeframe on, on doing those sessions. So more information will be coming on that. Sandy is staying on, Zefransky is staying on for, in her trustee position. Her trustee position was, her term was up this year, she's gonna stay on and continue to be president. The school representative is stepping down, 'cause she is going back to school to get her master's degree in, in library sciences, or whatever they call it these days. So that's kind of exciting for her, but that leaves an open position, so we'll, we're going to Bernie to find out how he wants to fill that position. Joan is still concerned about the 2018 interest. Has Joan talked...
I'd like to work with the auditor on that.
Okay. And then are you keeping track for 2019? Because it will be concerned for 2019 that we're getting our due interest.
Well, we're always keeping track of what's in each fund, which means the library is a separate thing, we keep track that way. Again, I need to talk to the auditor, because I don't exactly how to set that up, so we can credit it, because it expands so, over so many different departments of...
Right.
So...
Great, okay. And then Joan created another policy that we all took home to review. We'll be taking a look at that policy and voting on it at the next meeting. And unfortunately, I can't remember what the policy was about, so, and there's not a copy of it in the packet that I, that I have here, she handed it to us on paper. So I can't remember what that policy is about, so. If anyone's interested in the policies that we're working on, all they have to do is go down to the library and talk to Joan, and she can bring people up to date as well.
Okay. Alright. Any questions? Paula? Alright, moving on, Village Office updates.
I was going to the update on the Melster site and the construction. I also met with CART, that is on the agenda, so we will talk about that a little more. Liquor license renewal packets have gone out. For all the annual renewals, we will be setting up a liquor licensing committee meeting for that. Attended the Jefferson County Economic Development Consortium meeting last week, of which we are a member of the Board of that. Set up our zoning Board of Appeals for the Bilstad property. At our last meeting, we had a couple items splitting the property. This will be for variance for the frontage for those roads, similar to what we had taken up last year. We are continuing to work with the auditors. They will be here June 5th through June 7th. Barb has been working, you know, has 18 done to what they need right now. So she's working on the 2019, bringing up to date entries and so forth, and beginning reconciliation, also working on the annual TIF report. We did submit the revised expenditure restraint that we approved at the last meeting.
Okay. Alright. Any questions of Lisa? Alright, moving on, bills. Everybody's had a chance to look at this. We've got bills over $5,000, which includes one to Ellers for $9,350, and one to Dean Health for $779.05. First run of bills is $19,000, and the second run, must have missed one, $24.
It was just one bill that we're waiting to move in.
Okay. So entertain a motion for...
Can you read the total amount?
Oh.
Because otherwise, we aren't gonna know.
Sure, okay. Total amount of the bills, $24,453.88.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills and set them out.
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion? I have two questions. One, the bill was in there for Avic Gardner, and it was only $75, but when I looked at the receipt, or her documentation, it was over $1,000. I thought that the flowers were $500 for the budget, weren't they?
There's, that's gonna be coming up at Public Works tomorrow. That is, oh, the $75 is just for the bouquet that we did for Linda's funeral.
Okay. That, that's fine.
And the others, she's... And the others, she's still working on the pots. The pots were done for this weekend, the hanging baskets, she's still working on.
All right.
So, we do not have invoices for any of that yet, so...
Okay. So, that $1,077 does not really, it's just her bookkeeping, not ours. She's not over what we had for a budget amount.
And I'll have to look what the budget was.
Okay. All right. The other item, the question I had, we just mentioned it here with Ellers, is $9,350. Now, this gets us into the Donna Merg property. I thought we had a cap on that of $5,000.
We first hired them to do the feasibility study. After the feasibility study was done, we then hired them to go to the next step to create the TID documentation. And we had the first TID meeting in the Plan Commission meeting. So, we had hired them in two steps to do two different things. And each step was additional. So, the original $5,000 was for the feasibility study. This bill encompasses the feasibility and the creating the report to move forward with the TID.
It wasn't all part of the same engagement?
No. We had to, there was a board motion to move on with the second step.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So, that's a bill that we legally obligated to pay.
Work that they did for us.
Okay. All right. Any other questions before we have a roll call, since we are talking about financial matters? Can we have a roll call, voice vote, please? Lisa?
Not a voice vote, but trustee Cunningham, Whitwer...
Yes.
Brian Egg.
Yes.
Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Cumbier.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes. All right. Okay. Item number eight, unfinished business. Anything that they've got there?
Nothing on the agenda.
Yeah. All right. Just making sure. Okay, moving on. New business. We can discuss and possible action regarding the renaming of River Street to Olson Way. Lisa, what do you want to tell us on this one?
Back when...
Larry retired.
When Larry retired, the village board had recommended that we name River Street Olson Way. It's the street to the side of the village garage. There is only one property owner whose address is on River Street. They have agreed to the name change. They're actually doing some remodeling of that building right now. And so, it's a good time to change the addresses as they're adding different units within that building. So, they approved it, so we just need formal approval from the board and...
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for approval, renaming the street here in Cambridge. Larry Olson Way, or Olson Way.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution to 019-4, renaming of River Street to Olson Way.
Second.
Any further discussion necessary before we vote? Okay. All those in favor of approval of resolution 2019-4, renaming of River Street to Olson Way, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, motion carries. Moving on. CART, you have talked with these folks and...
They did come in. They looked at the space. We did talk some time-wise. If we're looking to move in July, that one, it probably wouldn't be available until about October. We'd want to go through all of our paperwork, go through, clean out our files before, instead of just moving everything down, taking our time to move things down. Also, some talk if it would just be the front office or the both, you know, the front office to start to make sure we have room for everything once we have everything moved out and so forth. They were going to go back to their board, get some ideas, you know, see if they thought the site was good for them. One, to see if our board still has interest in renting it out, if we would like to come up with some type of agreement. I have reached out to some realtors to see what rent for nonprofit spaces are. I don't have those answers yet. Or if we want them to come to us with a proposal. But they do, at this point, seem interested in moving downtown, being in more central location. We did have the discussion that while we are in the building, they wouldn't be leaning on us to be, when they're meeting with clients, they need two people there, that they wouldn't be relying on us to be the second person helping them. They would just be a tenant and...
And what was their response to that?
They were in agreement with that, yes, that nothing would be expected of us.
All right. So, we don't have any kind of a number yet from anybody as far as what that space might rent for?
No. We've reached out and we're looking and to see too what they would be willing...
I think CART does a lot of really great things in the community. So, what we could get from a standard retail perspective, I wouldn't expect that that is the price that we would charge CART.
We wouldn't either.
Well, it's not going to cost us a lot to get a number from a Realtor.
No, and that's what I, we can find enough data on what retail space goes for, but I wanted to see for nonprofits if, you know, more equitable for a nonprofit rather than...
And Lisa, can you just, for the benefit of those who might be watching on television, CART, what is that...
It's the Cambridge Area Resource Team, so they are there to assist people in need financially if they need clothing, you know, they have household furniture. They, you know, they're there to help citizens who are going through a rough time and need a little assistance.
Okay. So, how do we feel about giving Lisa, I guess, authority to continue to move ahead without obligating us with an idea like CART?
At some point, we'd like to see a lease or something like that, what they are going to do.
Well, yeah, but I mean, I think, I think part of, I mean, CART's been the idea the whole time since, you know, that was brought as an idea to us. So, I think that would be logical that we continue to pursue that until or if CART decides they are no longer interested.
Okay. Anybody else? Susan?
Nope. I'm all for CART.
Okay.
You do?
We're not obligating ourselves at this point. Just continue to get some information, and we can talk about it amongst ourselves at the next meeting if we have an idea of what the square footage...
Yeah, if they come to us or if I have numbers.
Yeah. I think we're going to have to tell them what we're looking for, you know. And they are a part of the community fabric, so we can help them out. I'm glad it's not a for-profit entity.
No.
Okay.
The only sticking point I had was the fact that I didn't, I didn't want there to be an expectation that our staff would be augmented to assist them in their interviewing process. So, now that you've stated that, I have no problem moving forward.
Okay. All right.
Do we know what they're paying currently?
I do not know.
Okay. Moving on. Water and Sewer Committee wants to obtain a loan in the amount of $200,000 for payment of treatment on wells two and three. And there's a payment out there for Dixon Engineering. Ted, I think you chair this committee.
Yep.
All right. What can you tell us?
Well, we, when the water tower was repainted, it was agreed upon that we'd make two payments, one in 2018, one in 2019. And everybody knew what the payments were going to be. And somehow, it was dropped at, and Andrew also knew about it. And all of a sudden, the bill showed up here.
There was a draft budget. I was not aware that this was coming. All of a sudden, a bill came for $123,000. And in talking to Dan, we started looking. Andrew had done a draft budget for water and sewer. He had this payment in there.
Yes.
As well as a payment to do some treatment that needs to be done on both wells.
Yep.
But there was no revenue for it. So, when I talked to Dan, I was, you know, what was the intent? And he said, well, Andrew said we're going to go out for borrowing for this. Well, that was never passed on when he left. So, we have received the bill, and for work that was done last year, we do have to pay them. So, Water and Sewer did request approval from the board for them to go out. It is a water and sewer loan, but it has to come from the village. But it is not against the general borrowing. It is from the utility.
So, the ratepayers, the ratepayers are paying for this, not the taxpayers.
And the same thing with wells two and three. We've waited probably three years already for, we've known about this for three years that we should, you know, we need to move forward on treating those wells and getting the new equipment that's proposed in there once the wells are treated, so this doesn't continue to happen of eating the pipes away, especially right at the threads, at the couplings. So, we need to move forward, and there is a proposal out there, and we just need to, once we have financing available, we need to move forward in getting those people scheduled.
I'll make a motion to approve the Water and Sewer Committee to go out for a $200,000 loan.
I'll second that.
Okay. Discussion?
Will this increase the water rates again, or was this already...
It might.
I wouldn't think it's going to, because it's over a longer period of time. It's just not going to affect us for one year. It's over many years, we're going to be paying this loan off, so...
I believe the last rate increase did take into consideration some of the future growth that we'd have to do. And I think the Water and Sewer Board is also thinking about doing annual increases versus one large increase.
We discussed that also.
So, and I, and I think what's always gotten us in the past is our water increases have been really big.
Right.
And so, the Water and Sewer Board is now taking a look at doing a 1% or 2% increase each year to help cover those additional always increasing costs versus then, versus every five years having a 20% increase.
And I know Oakland, on the sewer side of it, they do an annual increase of the sewer. So, they don't have these high jumps in sewer payments also.
There's two parts to this. The one part for the payment of the treatment of the wells, that we can do right away. The other one, though, with Dixon Engineering, as I understand, there were a couple of permits that weren't properly applied for at the time. And there's some paperwork and maybe even some follow-up items.
I will double check with Town and Country. There had been, when Dixon did the work, they had not pulled out the proper permits with the state. Dixon had told us that everything was taken care of when they came in. So, I will double check with our engineers before we make the payment to make sure that the state has signed off on...
Absolutely.
On everything.
And we have the, and they have the back, or our engineers have the backup paperwork.
Yeah.
Because at some time, at some point, they need to turn that over to the village.
Yeah.
All right. So, we're going to make sure before we release any funds to Dixon, payment of that final bill, which is what, $160,000?
$123,000.
That we've got the necessary clearance with the state of Wisconsin.
Yep.
Okay.
One other question. This is a, it's a very even number. Is that common in the borrowing?
We've put a little bit of extra in there because we don't know what we're going to run into when, especially on well number three, when we pull that well casing. We have no idea.
Just curious.
You know, it could fall apart coming out of there, for all I know.
Generally, when we do loans, we round up.
Okay. It could go up.
And Dixon was $123,000. The well is, we get quotes for $55,000.
So, there's a little bit there to start with anyway, so...
It was less than 25. It was 20, wasn't it? When I listen, or think back to your committee?
Well...
55 for the wells. So, there's two different parts.
Yeah.
One is 20, one is 30.
Okay.
And the 30 being that we don't want well number two down very long. Because that's our, that's our main well, and that's how we treat our waters.
Okay. But getting back to Eric, I think there was, I don't know, 20 grand or 15,000. It was just going to be, they had a little extra then in case something...
Creep money.
Yeah. Okay. How are we going to do this then, Lisa? Is this going to be a loan to take out? The village will have to sign a short-term loan? What's the, what are we looking at for payment on this?
We have not started doing the work yet. We will go out to the local banks, the state, to see what loans we can get, what's the best option, and it will come before the board, before anything's signed.
Okay. I have a question for you then, Paula. Is this okay if we bring it directly back to this meeting or to this group? Or do you want to have audit and finance?
No, it's the Water and Sewer Board that's making the commitment. It's the Water and Sewer Board that's going to have to pay for it. So, because the ratepayers aren't responsible, I'm sorry, because it's the ratepayers, not the taxpayers who are responsible. I feel like if the Water and Sewer Board approves, it can come directly then to the board.
Okay. All right. So, you'll bring us more information then, once we get ready for the final. But you are looking for approval or authority right now to move ahead.
Are you going to pay Dixon Engineering then, once you find out?
If we get the okay from Town and Country, we will pay it. You know, there's money there to pay it, but then it would be reimbursed by the loan once the loan is...
And it goes back to the general fund. Okay.
All right. So, we have a, we have a motion in a second. So, can we have a roll call on this one, since it is financial?
But it's not really, we're just approving them to go out and look at a loan.
Do we need to have a roll call at this point?
I can't hurt.
You can, we, yeah, to be safe, we can.
All right, go ahead.
So, trustee Brian Egg.
Yes.
Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Cumbier.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
Whitwer.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes. Okay. All right, moving on. D, ordinance number 2019-01, ordinance repealing the destruction records and recreating Section 2.100.080 on retention of public records. Lisa, what can you tell us about this?
The state recently, for the first time in...
1985 was the last.
1985 was the last. They redid all of the public records, retention schedules and so forth. We can repeal ours and accept their language. We then have the authority to go through and destroy records that they say can be destroyed. In the past, depending, everybody had their own ordinances. We had to contact them whenever we were going to be destroying records. We needed their approval. By accepting their language, everything they have set forth, we can just do. If there's things out of the ordinary, we would still be contacting them for approval to destroy records. But they spent a lot of time creating the new schedule and have it out there now for municipalities to approve.
Anything significant in the changes?
I have a couple of questions on it, but do we want to take that after we're, after we've made a motion, during discussion, or do you want to do it now?
We can make the motion, and then it doesn't matter.
Anybody have a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2019-01, destruction of records and recreating Section 2.100.080, retention of public records.
All right.
I'll second.
Okay. Paula?
So, I went out and just did a search on the records. So, it looks like any permanent records we need to turn over to the Wisconsin Historical Society?
If we were to get rid of them, we do keep, we have a number of, all our old minute books are here. We do have a lot of permanent records, certain building plans we need to keep. So there are certain things, we don't automatically turn it over to them. But if we were to be cleaning things out, getting rid of things, it would be turned over to them. But we don't have to...
Okay. And so, and then I was trying to look at the actual retention. So it looks like there are different categories of...
And they do have the plan here, if anyone wants to look at it, but...
Our, our financials are kept for six years?
And I'd have to look for specific, a lot are six to seven years.
I should say fiscal, yeah.
It differs between payroll and accounts receivable and accounts payable, and so when you say financials, those are all encompassed?
Fiscal, yeah, so here... Fiscal is the term that they're using in here.
Contract and request for bids are six years. You know, cash book is seven years. Bank statements is seven years.
So once we start complying with that, we should be able to greatly reduce the amount of storage space that we need?
What we're hoping is when we move into the new space, like we said to start, because of the last seven years, things have not all been filed where they should be and so forth. We want to go through, file things, have them in boxes with the destruction, you know, what's in the box, what the destruction date is, so we can put them on the shelf, and we know at this date, this can be...
Because it's really important for document retention purposes to actually destroy it when that date comes? So, okay.
Yeah, and that's our goal. When I said it's going to take us a little time to move over all the records, we have some files down here. We have our office files, all of our books, but the people who have sent in the other office have often kept their own files, so to get them all merged together and get them moved.
Is there somewhere intern we could hire to help assist with some of that?
We've talked about it, you know, some things, a lot of stuff that we're going to just have to be looking at papers.
The difficulty is with an intern now, when it comes to, you know, creating file folders and things like that, they could assist with that, but when actually going through the records, it takes our expertise to know what is important and what isn't, because it just might be an individual letter on something that, hmm, that's kind of a touchy issue, we better keep that here. And they wouldn't know that part.
Are you going to then actually schedule X amount of hours each week and, and live by that schedule? Otherwise, I can tell you right now, it won't get done.
Right.
Part of our discussion has been coming in on weekends to go through some, because for us to do it in the middle of the office during the workday is hard with interruptions and...
Or stay an extra hour at night if that's easier for someone's schedule versus coming in on a weekend?
Yeah.
Because even, even, even an extra, you know, two or three hour a week adds up.
We're really good at doing that right now.
We're trying.
The stuff we moved from the library that was stored in the old space into my office, there's boxes. So if we're at the microwave heating up our lunch, we'll just go through the box and separate things, so...
Two to five minutes here or there, you know, but I got through one box that way.
Yeah, that's good. So we're working on it, but yeah, it will be taking some time outside of regular office hours to do all that.
The document that you have there that has the actual things, could you scan that and send it to me electronically? I don't want you to take another copy. I don't want to, I don't want to ruin a tree, but I would love to have it electronically.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Was there a link online?
It is on the...
You can, it's on the, I'm sorry if you don't...
No, I went up there and kind of was trying to look.
It's on the Wisconsin State Historical website, but if you just Google Wisconsin general records schedule, you should be able to find it, or gen, or records, Wisconsin records retention.
Yeah, I got the, I got the introduction, I found that one, but I wasn't sure which, which next document to look at, yeah. So maybe just send me the title of the document, that would help too.
And I can scan it too.
If I can add one more thing. Chris, you started to ask about any large changes.
Right.
To me, the biggest thing that I recognize, and this isn't on necessarily individual items, because I tried to do this at my prior location in cleaning out records. What you had to do in the past is you had to make a list of every single document you wanted to destroy and submit that to them, and then get their approval before you could do anything with it.
Right.
So it's extremely labor-intensive that way. This avoids that.
Beautiful.
Which is huge.
So you have, you just take that step right out?
Lisa, is there any reason why we would not want to adopt or to vote for this ordinance change request?
No.
Okay.
Because we'd have to go back to our old stuff of sending them everything still then.
I, I found, I found the other document.
Oh.
So I'm good.
Okay.
Yep, I found the entire schedule versus just the introduction piece, so I'm good. Thank you.
Any further questions? All right, we have a motion and, or we have a...
Motion in a second.
Motion in a second, yeah. On approval of Section 2.100.080 regarding retention of public records, the change. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, hearing none, motion has passed. Okay, moving on. Ten correspondence, looks like it's blank, anything we need to be, nothing, all right. We do have some upcoming meetings. Public Works is going to meet on May 29th, Plan Commission on June 10th, Village Board on June 11th, Library Board June 12th, Water and Sewer on June 18th, and a licensing committee to be determined. Any other requests in there at this time?
Nope.
Okay. How about, we move on to number 12, questions, referrals to staff of future agenda items.
I have one.
Okay. Why don't I go with you?
Go ahead.
Recognition of Steve Struss's years of service, how are you doing with that, Lisa?
We will have a proclamation. I want to invite him to the meeting, make sure he can attend, and we will have a proclamation for him.
Can we have it where we all sign that? The entire board, instead of just me? Okay, all right, good. Approval of the Park and Ride Bicycle Trail Grant?
That's what we're talking about before. We have not accepted the grant from the county yet, especially because the village would be taking on responsibility for the entire grant.
Right, so we just continue to hold on that? Don't do anything, all right. And then you've got a request for proposal for trash and recycling?
I'm working on that with, Rockdale is going out for an RFP at this time too. So seeing if we can put them both out at the same time. Our contract is up with Advanced, go out for an RFP. I've had a number of vendors stop in and, and talk to us, so...
Superb.
All right.
Because Advanced just seems to get bigger and bigger and bigger, and a lot of times they...
I heard they were bought out again, I don't know that for sure, but...
All right.
When we call, we get a service center in Texas, we'll give you an address. No, you don't have a street by that name, it's like, yes, we do.
When is our contract open?
At the end of this year, this calendar year.
I think you're talking to somebody in India.
Okay, I have, I'll get to Paula here. D, duplication of records, we were kind of talking about this with what you're doing, but I'm specifically now thinking of that box. And I have asked Lisa, we have a box, it's about like so, and it's filled with Melster records, but it's just one copy, and I'm asking that we have an electronic copy made of those records, everything that's in there. I don't know how you're going to do it. This might be something where you're going to spend more than two minutes at a time or five minutes, but I just worry that without that record, that complete box, if anything happens, we'd be in a world of hurt.
I think we should have, and it should be put in some type of order and scanned.
I've been, I've been trying to, it's piecemeal putting together this record. We've had some documents. I just received a document today from Stafford Rosebaum that, a memo they had done back in 2016, which I had never seen, so it's not in the files that we had. So I've been collecting stuff, doing a lot of digging and filing it, creating the file, but yeah, to then...
It's going to take a little bit to get that, yep.
Yeah, I don't, like I said, I don't care if you put it on a PDF or it's in the cloud, wherever, but it's someplace that, you know, in addition to a hard copy, that if we ever had to produce it, we could. And if you have to hire somebody to assist you with that, an intern or something, I understand, but I have asked for that. Okay, and you could tell us if there is a cost?
Yeah.
And we can go from there. Paula, you had something you wanted to bring up?
So recently, someone had come into the village and asked about what are the requirements or what they need to do in order to open a business in town? And you, Lisa, you happened to be gone, and no one else in the office really knew how to answer that question. So could we put together a packet that is available if somebody comes in and says, hey, I'd like to open up a business in town? What are all the requirements, or what kind of things do I need to do in order to do that? That you could just hand them that packet, because then it's right there in handy, and I think that makes us look more business-friendly. So if we could get something like that pulled together, I think that'd be great.
Yep.
I think we had talked about that once before, but it was, kind of got into maybe the chamber or available...
Does the chamber do something like that?
We did have a lot of those documents together on our old website.
Okay.
They have not, were not moved to the new website. So again, it's going back and finding, and I know if it's the same person she came in, and I did give her some of the information. There's one document I still have to get to her.
So it's like, as you're pulling it together for her, it's really easy just to create a packet, I think, to do that? I think that might be nice. Because then the next time, you could say, yes, here.
Yeah.
Great, that was done in 20 seconds.
All right.
Good.
Anything else for staff?
I had one thing, so I had three different people from North Street complain to me about the speed of people going up and down on North Street. With the concerts in the park coming up, I don't know if there's some sort of law enforcement thing they could do to... I know they did it last summer to try and get people to slow down on that street. They were talking about speed bumps, but I don't think that's...
I say, yeah, can we consider putting speed bumps in? Why not?
So I just wanted to throw that out there.
I can talk to the police and see if they...
The same thing on Main Street about 4:30 in the afternoon, it's unbelievable how fast they can get going, going, coming around curves.
They do do, North Street and probably getting worse toward the end of the school year. So I can talk to the police and...
Yeah, that was the big concern about redoing North Street. It's like, oh man, it's going to be a nice clean road, people are going to grow a lot faster. Because when the road is crappy, people are slower, and then all those potholes were in the road.
It's gotten better now, the bar is not on the corner there.
Good.
I haven't seen as many people hitting street signs and things, but...
Until they hit the road over in Oakland area, then they have to slow down.
That'll slow them down.
Okay.
All righty, anything else for staff, future agenda items?